I'm going to call to order the Thursday, October 5th, 2023 Select Board meeting for the town of Norton. Present is the entire Select Board: Denise Luciano, Meg Arts, Alec Rich, Steve Hornsby, and myself, Kevin Snyder, along with the Town Manager, Mike Units. And first thing we do is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
So first up is we have a vote on an appointment for the Conservation Commission. Is Paxton here?
Yes.
There's Paxton right there. The interest is from Paxton Halsall?
Yes.
At 80 North Washington Street. So Paxton, welcome. And if you just want to give us a few words on your interest in the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Select Board, members of the public. This regards my interest in becoming an appointed member of the Conservation Commission and serving on the board. I've been a longtime resident of Norton, and I went to school, college, and have come back after studying environmental sustainability. And this is my interest and passion to kind of get back at the local level. And I think there's nothing better than to start locally in my career.
Anybody have any questions for Paxton? You know it's a lot of work, right?
What do you do now?
So right now, I bartend at the Chateau and one other restaurant. So I just actually recently moved back. So I just completed the Appalachian Trail. I'm not sure if you're familiar.
Good for you, yes.
That's what I did most recently. So I was gone for five months. Before that, I was actually working in DC at the US Chamber of Commerce. So that's my most recent employment. And there as Operations Manager for the International Affairs Division. And now I'm back in Norton, and I'm happy to be here.
Great. And you had a chance to sit in on a ConCon meeting already?
Yep. It was passed, yeah, Monday. I sat in on a Conservation Commission meeting and just kind of was able to see, you know, the process of, you know, all board members and just, you know, speaking to on new developments coming to the town. So I'm happy to contribute and really willing to learn. I've kind of looked over a little bit more about Massachusetts wetland state protections, so much more familiar with that.
Great.
Awesome.
Excellent.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Paxton Halsall to Conservation Commission.
A second.
Okay. Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It's unanimous.
Thank you for your contribution.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
All right. So next up, we have appointment of a Select Board member to the Narcotics, Overdose Prevention and Education Committee. This is also known as NOPE. So we had a discussion on this, a brief discussion on this, I think, at our last meeting, just that the Select Board currently did not have a representative. So we wanted to just see if anybody was interested in doing so.
How often do they meet?
What times a year? I think it's quarterly.
Yes, four times a year. That's right.
And usually meet at the middle school at 11 o'clock.
In the morning?
Hopefully.
I can do it if it appeals.
Is anybody else interested?
I am, but I can't guarantee I can do it at 11 o'clock.
Yeah, until 11 o'clock. Alex, same thing?
That's fine. If Steve wants to do it, that's fine. Okay, I'll do it.
All right. Okay. So I'll nominate Steve to be the Select Board's Representative Member to the NOPE Commission. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Wow, a lot of seconds.
Three seconds. Got three seconds.
We'll give that to Alan. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Good luck, Steve.
The minutes from our last meeting, I don't think are ready, correct? Because that was just a week ago. Do we have any minutes in here?
No.
I didn't see that.
I didn't see that.
No, I didn't. Okay, so we'll skip that. And we will move on to licenses and permits. We have a application, special events application from Gary Cameron for the Veteran's Day Parade scheduled from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, November 11th.
Love that period. How will motion to approve the special events application from Gary Cameron for the Veteran's Day Parade scheduled from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturday, November 11th? Second.
Okay. Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. It's unanimous. Is the clerk ready to do the announcements?
I may find him. There we go.
All right. Thanks, Alan.
Okay. First one is the, which Mr. Marson last meeting spoke to, the annual DeFossis-Petersen Memorial Food Drive, October 21st, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. People will be driving around, volunteers will be driving around, picking up donated food and paper supplies at your mailbox between those hours, 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM on Saturday, October 21st, and bringing them to the Covet of Kindness. So they are asking for the most needed items: cereal, granola bars, crackers, coffee, juice boxes, pasta and sauce, mac and cheese, soup, beef stew, canned chicken, ham, and canned ham, smaller bottles of detergent, shampoo, toothpaste, and soap. It's sponsored by Marson's Upholstery Shop, the C2 Foundation, and Norton Police.
Awesome. And I know I've seen on social media, members of the board kind of forwarding that around as much as possible. So if we could keep doing that, that would be great.
And anybody has any questions? You can reach out to Roger Marson directly at 508-339-3341. And then, next one.
Yeah, so the next one, I think, was just a reminder from Roger's presentation as well, that if there are any veterans who are interested in participating in the Halloween Parade or the Veteran's Day Parade, that they could reach out to him, I think.
Yes.
And with Norton VFW, and, you know, they'll figure out a way to, you know, if you need help getting there, or, you know, directions, or you want to join in with their float or any of that, to just contact them. So, and then the Charlie Halloween Parade is on Sunday, the 29th. So big event. Select Board will be there. Everybody's going to be there? Everybody's going to be there?
I got a lot of candy.
Yeah, bring a lot of candy.
And costume.
And Mike will drive.
No, Mike won't.
Yeah, yeah. He's really, really. Okay. All right. So we'll move on to new business. So up first is an update from Melissa Nizyolik, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation, on Founder's Day 2024.
Oh, my. I don't know if I want to see you or the paper.
The paper.
So with all the talk about Founder's Day around July 4th, I thought I'd do some research and some digging, because our biggest issue, while the new fields are fabulous, they took our spot for Founder's Day. So I looked at all the suggestions and all that kind of on social media, and we talked with Chief Simmons, Deputy Chief Robbins, Conservation Agent John Thomas, Mike, and myself. We all sat down and kind of discussed the possible sites, because that's the first thing that the committee would need. So we looked at Xfinity Center, and the issues with that one are that they charge for space now, and we would probably be doing it in the parking lots. So it would get hot. There's really no place to sit. It's not really comfortable to sit in a parking lot all day. So that's that one. We looked at the JCS, because the JCS has Rose Farm behind it. The difficulties with that one is Rose Farm is basically inaccessible except for a little patch of road, and it doesn't accommodate the trucks, the fireworks trucks and the fire trucks. There's not enough, large enough space for viewing, because the schools there, it's just kind of awkwardly stacked. There's not enough space for the other activities that usually go along with Founder's Day, and there's not enough parking. So if you look in your packets too, I included maps, so you could kind of see where it was. Because with the fireworks, you need 210-foot radius of, from where they're shot off to where people sit and space behind them, and there really isn't any space at JCS.
So that's a radius, 210 feet around?
Around. So like the truck where they shoot them off, or the things that they shoot them off, it's got to go all the way around. They did say there's a little wiggle room on the backside, but on the front where the people are, they like at least 210.
Okay.
And it's all dependent on the size of the shelves. I learned so much from this. It's also dependent on the size of the shelves. So if it's a four-inch shelf, then it's, I believe it's 400 feet. A three-inch shelf is about the 210, 225 range. The bigger shelves, the higher the bigger the fireworks are, too. So then we also looked at Beaton. And I looked at two different spaces at Beaton, both on the soccer fields and over at the baseball field. Again, they may charge us to use the space, don't know. But before we even got into that, there's not ample space for the radius, the extra stuff, the parking. It's just not really conducive to how the campus is laid out to do those things. So cross that one off the list. Norton Middle School, there's two options at the middle school. One is to use the lower field, which when you're heading to the back, it's off to the right, it's kind of hidden back there.
Baseball.
Baseball, I think Norton's football pop uses it back there. I think regular football practices back there, too, sometimes. Not regular, high school. The difficulty with doing that option is that the lower field is just that, it's lower, which when you kind of look at it, you don't really notice, but it's lower. So with the high trees and the viewing area being over where the soccer fields are, you would lose fireworks, so you wouldn't see them. And there's a bridge to go over to get there, and that bridge is like very old, and both school department and fire said, no trucks over the bridge. So that one's out. Option B is to do the fireworks in the back of the soccer fields, like push them as back as far as you can. And you can see that on the map, is if you push them as far back as you can, it gives you pretty much ample space to have everything else. The difficulties, and it's not even really a difficulty, but the difficulties would be the school department leases the space to Norton U Soccer, so it's not just going to the school department, it's also going through soccer and working with both parties to make sure that it's approved. And because soccer uses those fields and they maintain them and they do all the maintenance and the improvements, it was suggested that we probably should have a contingency fund in the budget to do any repairs, should the fireworks or the trucks or anything do any damage to the fields. So the positives for option B are parking could be utilized in the front and over at St. Mary's. We just need to work with St. Mary's and let them know about it. We probably need an additional police officer for the road for crosswalks. And it could be done with not too much impact on everything else. So that's a potential viable option. The other option, after talking with the school department, too, is to look at kind of where we used to have it. So over at the high school in the Yell complex. The first option is Option A is to shoot the fireworks off from the pitfield, which is behind the Yell, the old football field, with the viewing area on the turf field. And the other, and the other activities could be modified to fit in the parking lots and around the other spaces. Option B is to shoot the fireworks off from the varsity softball field with the viewing area on the baseball field and/or the football field. With Option A, which is from the pitfield, we'd have to have somebody monitoring those sitting on the turf field, so that there's no spikes. There's also no food or drink allowed on the turf field. So we'd have to kind of have people monitoring that, because Gatorade's bills, it gets all sticking in the chairs with spikes and that kind of thing. And Option B, the difficulty is the building's in the way. So if you look at the map, while it looks good in theory, you're catching the side of the high school and the press box, which probably wouldn't be in the way, but it's could lead to obstructive view. So it's not the best option of those two. So with the fireworks, that's the next thing. There's two main firework companies in the area, Atlas Pyrotechnics and American Thunder Fireworks. I believe Norton has probably worked with both, because when I talked to them, they said, oh, we've been there. Go ahead.
If I make, was it Senator Feeney that told us that he does fireworks? Senator, State Senator Feeney told us to talk to him about fireworks? Or he knows companies that'll do it for a lot less substantial?
Yes, significantly.
Okay. That's good to know.
Apologize for interrupting.
No, no, that's, that's, that's fine. That's a good point. I appreciate it. So when talking to the two vendors, it was a little difficult, A, because they had both been here, and they were both like, oh, sure. So it was getting me a little confused, because I didn't know which year they were talking about and all that stuff. But they would both need to see the site, so it was hard to get an actual quote from them. So what I did was I turned to other local groups that did them in the area to kind of get a feel for pricing. So Braintree did them. They did them at 4th of July, and their fireworks budget was about $25,000 for 35 to 40 minutes. Needham also did them, and theirs was 18 to 22,000. Franklin's was 15 to 20,000, and these are all about 20-minute displays. If you go longer than that, everybody has said people lose interest, so then you're just kind of paying for nothing. Those were the three I had. Atlas was also, Atlas Pyrovision used to be Atlas Pyrotechnics, so if you heard those, it got bought and then it changed names, and that also ended to some of the confusion when they were trying to get the quotes. Atlas also does Foxborough's Patriot Place and the North Attleboro's Kids' Day. North Attleboro does them both on Saturday and Sunday night. One's like a 10-minute display, right, that's about 10,000, and the other one is Saturday night, and that's about a 20-minute display, that's about 15,000, but I believe they bundle the rights together, so they get a slightly better deal. I'm not going to read the next page for you. It's all the finances, so you can see how they did sponsorships, they did money, previous years had done money from vendors, they've gotten some raffle donations, general donations, and then I listed all the expenses that I could find. So we're talking about, you know, this was from 2019, it was about $17,000 in expenses. They spent, or the income was only about 11,000. I don't know what the kitty was that they had started from the year before, I didn't delve that deep. But it's not a cheap, it's not a cheap event to run, really, for 20 minutes worth of fireworks. Really, because most of the people come for the fireworks in the afternoon. Not saying it's not a great event, not saying it's not fun, it's not anything, but it's expensive and it's a lot of work for the event.
Why was the, why were the fireworks so much cheaper in 2019? They were only 7,500.
I don't know what the deal was, but I also did ask, and fire, along with everything else, fireworks for transportation and materials has skyrocketed in price.
No intended.
Didn't even know I did that one. Thanks, Kevin. Currently in the account for Founder's Day, there's 31,431 dollars.
13,000.
What did I?
You said 31.
13,431 dollars and 40. Yeah, they're far away. And those funds have to stay in there, as you all know, because they were collected for Founder's Day, so they have to stay at Founder's Day. In coordinating this type of event, you need a lot of people. It can't be one person, and it really needs to be a group concerted effort of people buying it. So you would need the event chair, someone to handle the finances. Some of these people can double up, but this, I was kind of giving a groundwork of what needs, positions that need to be. The finance coordinator, the fireworks person to work between them and the fire department, publicity, make sure everybody gets the word out, sponsorships, vendors, because they had food vendors and they had non-vendors, and then they had, they had like three different kinds of vendor categories in the past. And then a volunteer court, because you need a lot of volunteers and manpower to do this. And so that was pretty much what I found. I gave a couple examples on the last page of the other towns that do similar things with fireworks and their town days. And then just some thoughts to think about before going forward. Does the town just want fireworks? Or do they just want the event? Or does it have to be both? Like, before I think we commit to anything, I think, I think it needs to be figured out, like, are we going to put the work into the day and then the fireworks at night, or do most people just want the fireworks?
And I'll just throw out there, St. Mary's is going to be celebrating their 100th anniversary this coming, I guess, 2024.
Yep.
So I don't know if there's an opportunity to partner, bundle in some way. I'm on one of the committees, so I'm just throwing out there, because clearly it's going to be.
That leads to my, one of my other things to think about, the carnival that the VFW do. Do we partner, do we partner with the carnival and then make it a five-day event, which is what one other town does? They have a carnival for five days. The other town, I'm forgetting which town it is, but they take the proceeds from the carnival as their money generating for the fireworks. We couldn't quite do that, because that's the VFW's, but I'm sure we could figure something out. You know, how do, how can the town help with this project? Is there funds or discounts or something to help? Because we'd be looking at probably raising 25, total budget would probably be 25 for fireworks and 10, 15 for everything else, so you're talking $40,000. That's a lot to fundraise off the businesses in town. So we need some help. And is there a way to enhance this event so that other groups have buy into it, so it continues its longevity? Like, does, like, if we partnered with the VFW, they'd have a vested interest, because their carnival would be part of it. One town does a five, or Rantham does the, I forgot how they say it, the Rantham Road Race or whatever, that's part of the town day. So that group that runs it has a vested interest in seeing that it keeps happening. So instead of maybe it just being this one singular committee, we partner with other groups to do this. Now, as I keep saying, "we."
It's you.
It can't be me. It can't be me in all honesty, because it needs to be a group effort, I'm serious. I'm happy to help, but with the 25 hours that the Park and Rec Department has for me, and at the time of year when we do this, which is another thing to look at, do we want, does it have to be, does it have to be June? If it stays June, for me and Park and Rec, that's when I'm trying to get the light curves and the pools and all that, and I'm already doing over the 25 hours, so it's not feasible for this position to head this community. Happy to help, and the money's under us, so I would have a role anyway, because I have to help with that, but this can't fall on Park and Rec. Unless you guys want to give 50 hours a week, which I don't want to do anyway, but. Does anybody have any questions? I throw a whole lot of stuff in here, so sorry.
That's all right. You know what? Thank you. This is a great overview of everything.
A lot of great research in here, yeah.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was just saying, you put a ton of work into this, and it shows. One thing I like is what you mentioned, that North Attleboro does bring the donations slip in with the utility bills. I think that's a fantastic idea to raise funds with, you know, 1, 5, 10, 20 dollars.
Yep.
I think that's great.
But again, I think, to your point earlier, giving clarity on what it is, right? If it's going to be a Founder's Day with fireworks, even if you're putting in the utility bill, you're putting in a buck slip or whatever, you still need to articulate what that is, right? Is it going to be some bigger thing that's going to be joint with the VFW and potentially St. Mary's or whatever, just so the community knows what they're giving to.
Exactly. Exactly. So I think the first couple steps are, you know, outlining what it is to be, finding a committee to do this, because you can't do anything without the committee to do this. And then the next, once you get all that, the next step is to secure the location. Schools were great. We was fabulous about offering the spaces. And he's very amenable to making it work. We just have to be respectful of the turf that we all paid a lot of money for, so let's not trash it with the first biggest event we have over there. But I think it could work over there. Either that or the middle school. Those are probably the two best things.
So you, so you mentioned in here that it's probably a year's worth of program.
Oh, absolutely.
So I'll ask the question, does that mean 2024 is likely out as a possibility?
No. I think if it moves fast in these initial phases of getting a committee, getting the site done, I think you can still do 2024.
Yep.
You would just have to have people working faster than if you started planning this in, say we have it in June. If they start planning the next one in July, you can go a little slower. Now, starting in November, you just have to go a little faster. But I think it could be done if everything falls into place relatively quickly on this side.
So we can just.
If it is going to move forward, and you are going to have fireworks, I think, like, December is usually the target date to.
Yes.
Get somebody lined up.
Yes.
Because after that, they're pretty much all booked.
Yeah.
And it does help that we're not on 4th, on the 4th of July weekend, right?
It does help, but there's a lot of them, when I was looking at them, there's a lot of them in June-ish.
Yep.
So maybe, I forgot who I was talking to. They did some event in the fall, and they did a spring event as well. Both had fireworks, I think it was Sharon. And she said, the woman from Sharon said, the fireworks display in the fall, she felt was better than the one in the spring, because there was more time, the crew had less hustle and bustle to like bang them all out, that she felt they got better attention and a better show for the fall program.
Quick question, and this is just hypothetical. A end-of-summer-for-the-kids Labor Day weekend carnival, that's going to pay for the fireworks with the rides and everything else. Is that, you know, to your point, a possible multi-day venue with carnival rides and whatnot? Like I said, that's what brings revenue. And you'd be amenable to talking with the VFW? How about that?
I think it should be the committee chair who's going to run the event. I'm happy to kind of work with them, but I think that's something we should talk to. Like, that's how one of the, I forgot which town it is, that's how they do it. They're a five-day event, and they touted it as a five-day event. It's really a carnival for five days, and they add things around the carnival. They've added a bluegrass festival to like Saturday or Sunday. Sorry, I can't remember which town it was. But I think that's a fabulous idea. Let's, the more, the better, and that way, to me, you're going to draw more people. I believe the VFW carnival was very well attended, and they did well, and I think they want to bring it back. Again, we'd have to work with the school, or they would have to work with the school as to when they could have it. But I think it would be great to put it together. That was kind of my first thought when I saw them doing that. It was like, oh.
Yeah, I think carnival would be fantastic, but I think you have to decide upfront how you split the proceeds.
Exactly.
Right?
Yeah.
So it's not all going to the fire, the reason why they did it is money for VFW.
Right. But remember, too, we're talking 40,000, this is my fundraising, but 40,000, so if you're talking getting 40 businesses/individual to give 1,000 bucks each, it's 40 people in a town of 20,000.
It's a lot higher than you think.
I do this for a living. I know, I get it, but I just think, again, also thinking about, you know, so not robbing Peter to pay Paul in terms of the VFW's efforts. I think there could be a concerted effort of how you can raise.
I think there's some mutual drop chain to them, too, right? It's the same pool of people, I don't want to do both, and why not go to carnival and then go see the fireworks or?
Yeah. And the year timeline helps with the fundraising, because the businesses have different timelines as to when they have their marketing budget. Some are fiscal, some are July, some are who knows what. So it takes, it's not, as you know, it's not just sending it. So it takes, it's not, as you know, it's not just sending it in and being like, oh, sure, here's a thousand dollars. It takes time, it takes the following, and that's, that's part of the year-long plotting to make this happen.
I think one research we should tap into is the volunteer hours that the kids have to do, both for school and for the church commitment. They have volunteer hours required there as well. The VFW did a great job tapping into that volunteer need with the kids. I think we should definitely do that, too, with, if we have a Founder's Day committee.
And what a greater, you know, what the best way to involve the kids is Founder's Day, and it's like serving, right? It's great.
So in terms of procedure, we should maybe create a committee?
Create a committee?
Yeah.
House.
Yeah. I mean, how many people do you think, I mean, we're, we're talking about getting volunteers, but I think we have to create a committee first, is what I was getting at there.
Right.
So how many people do you think we need for a committee? You research so much, I know you have the answer.
Well, so it's hard, though, because a lot of things that she said, like she said, you can have one person that has multiple roles, right?
What we could do is maybe motion to create a committee, and then, and then table the details on the committee until we have a, a chair.
A chair, yeah. Yes, I, I think that's probably the first thing, is see who steps up to help with this.
Yeah. See if we get a chair first, and have the chair kind of work on some of the details, and then get started, that might be?
So I'll, I will motion to create the, the Founder's Day committee.
Second.
I will second, yeah.
Okay. Hearing motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. So next up is, how do we find someone to chair a committee?
Hope they step forward.
Everybody call everybody we know.
Should they reach out to you, Mike?
Lots everywhere.
Okay, so they reach out to Mike or Melissa? Okay?
Yeah, blocks, blocks.
We got to put out a message about it.
Yeah. And then if we get multiple candidates, we'll probably have to, do we review the candidates for something like that, or how would that work?
I would think, are you, are you going to pick a chair, or are you going to pick a committee and let the committee pick the chair?
I would say pick a committee or let the committee.
I would say whoever, whoever volunteers, give them a role, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Pick a chair and then say, oh, you can take these other roles, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, that obviously makes sense.
I would not turn away anyone who's offering to step up.
Okay.
But I think you need, you need a date, so you need to be able to say, we're looking at committee members by November 15th.
Yeah. How about November 15th?
How about November 15th?
Does that sound good?
Let me look at the calendar.
Do you think that's a good timeframe?
I'm looking at the calendar.
Yeah.
This one will just have to be faster than it.
Yeah, yeah.
People have to submit their desire to be a chair.
How about November 9th? Because that's our next, oh, that's our first meeting in November.
Okay. November 9th.
So before, so by November 8th, that way we can?
Melissa, do you want to put something out on the Facebook page for Parks and Rec?
Sure.
I know you've been doing active on that, so.
That'd be great.
Put that out there.
Yeah.
Whatever other communication we have that we can use, put it out there. And then we'll reconvene on November 9th at our November 9th meeting and see where we are.
Okay.
Anything else you guys think we should do between now and then? Maybe we'll reach out to the VFW? We do that?
I can do that. Okay, perfect.
Denise will do that.
And I can talk to St. Mary's, I mean, I know it's a little mixing of stuff, but they're doing a celebration anyway, so.
It's all community.
Yeah.
It's all community, right.
Okay. Might as well start that line of communication and see if it leads somewhere for both of them, so. All right?
Okay, great.
Great job, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
I think I'm number two on your agenda.
Oh! Number two as well, okay.
Table that one.
Yeah, all right, so number two is, oh yeah, we have some camera equipment we want to declare a surplus.
Table that.
Table that?
Table that, I have to go find it, it, I've learned again, I stuffed it in a box.
Okay. All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We will, I guess we vote to table? Do we have to do that?
No.
We're not taking it up. Number, all right, number three, discussion? Discussion on inspections, departments, permit fees, and sewer connection fees. Is Lucas here? He's over there.
Yes.
So, you know what, Steve? If you want to give some background on this, because I know Lucas reached out to you and I think to Alec via email, so, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Lucas reached out, and he kind of pointed out the fact that Norton's, Norton's permit fees are a lot higher compared to towns around us. I'd rather have Lucas kind of explain it directly, because I think he, I think he's, I'll let him speak for himself.
Thanks for coming in, Lucas.
Yep. So, so my name's Lucas Ray, I'm a contractor in Norton, and I've been doing business since 2001. You know, first 20 years in the business, the permit fees in town were pretty comparable to the surrounding towns. It wasn't until, was it maybe three or four years ago, that the permit fees significantly increased under the previous building inspector. So, you know, I've been complaining about it for a few years, I know a lot of contractors in town have been complaining about the, the fees. Just so everyone's clear, it doesn't affect us as contractors, it affects the homeowners, because we just have to add these fees onto the estimates, you know, especially the elderly and, you know, people on fixed incomes, you know, trying to struggle to put roofs in their homes and windows and doors, and you gotta pay these astronomical fees. So what I did was I took the time to create a spreadsheet here. I'm not sure that everybody follows Facebook, but I did put it on the Norton Avis page. It's basically a breakdown of, you know, Norton compared to every other town in the surrounding areas. So typically, most of the towns do either a square foot price on your building permits, or they'll do X amount, you know, say $10 per thousand of the job cost. Norton is actually, you know, a little higher, but pretty comparable if you're building a new home, or if you're doing an addition. Even with the commercial, we're, we're a little bit higher, but we're not that far off. We're about $18 per thousand, which is, is pretty high for, for a town. You know, that's, that's more like the city rates. Where, where Norton really struggles to compete is on small projects, roofs, siding, windows. So if you look at, you know, I can even pass this around, you know, if you look at the spreadsheet I did, so just for an example, a $20,000 roof in Norton, you're paying $10 per thousand, plus you're paying a $50 initiation fee. So a $20,000 residential roof in town, your permit fee is $250. Mansfield, that same roof, is $50. Foxborough, $75. Rantham, $50. Easton, $50. Berkeley, $45. You actually got to go all the way out to Cambridge and Brookline to find a comparable fee, which Cambridge is $300, Brookline is $300. On the commercial end, you know, it's $100,000 commercial roof. Norton is $100 base fee plus $18 per thousand, so that permit fee would be $1,900. That's pretty close to the surrounding towns. Mansfield's about $100 less, Foxborough would be $300 less. Go to Easton, they're $500 less. Berkeley, they've given them away $1,900 less, basically a permit fee for $100 in Berkeley. So, so here's just a couple of the permits I pulled recently, just for an example, yeah, exactly. So this, this fee was a commercial roof. This was for the rehab center on alcohol rehab center, one cottage we did. The fee was $1,330. Berkeley, we charged $100 for that roof. So, another note, so this week in town, I pulled six permits for, for roofs. I've paid over $1,500 in fees for residential roofs in town this week. Those same six roofs in Mansfield would have cost me $300 totally. Were five times the cost on average of my neighboring town. This one really is what prompted me to bring this up. This, there was a customer on Route 123 here, an elderly woman lives, lives along. Her insurance company was forcing her to do her siding windows and roof, or they were going to cancel her policy. She called me up, I went out there, the lady was all distraught crying about, you know, insurance company. So I do a lot of insurance work, so I was trying to guide her in the right direction, trying to get her a new insurance, but, you know, she would have probably been stuck with mass property, and nobody wants to go there. So, so I had to add, on top of, you know, her, her windows, roof, and siding, I had to add $670 in fees, just to do this woman's roof, siding, and windows. An elderly woman that lives along, lives on social security. We had to add $700. You know, if this was Mansfield, I would have added $150 for that same thing. So, that's what actually, that job is what really prompted me to, you know, say something and bring this up, because it's, it's not fair to the citizens in Norton. It doesn't affect us, because we just, we all have to do, we all have to add to these, to these contracts. The, here's another permit I did, this is an addition we're doing. It was a base, the permit fee was, you know, $4,970 to build a two-car garage with a room above. We also get hit with a $3,850 water department fee because we added a bedroom. They're already tied into this, so. Plus $3,850 because we added a bedroom. I mean, that's, not to mention the tying fees, that's a whole nother sewer tying fees. I mean, that's, that's just absurd. If you look at the fees in Norton, you get $15,000, $20,000 to get a permit, but that's not why I'm here today, but I'd like to mention it, so everybody's aware of it. But that's another issue that the town seriously has to look at. My mother, you know, she just tied in her sewer a few years ago, and she, I think she paid $10,000, $8,000 or $10,000 at the time, and she didn't have, so, and she was forced to tie in. So, that, that's not fair either. If you look at the surrounding towns, I was actually hoping to speak to the building inspector, because, you know, he seems to have a good head on his shoulders. Norton's finally got a great building inspector in town. And I was hoping you'd say that, but I'd like to speak to him about, you know, my suggestion, not that it matters, I'm guessing, but I'd like to, you know, put my two cents in on where I think the fee should be, to be comparable to the surrounding towns. Like I said, where it really hurts is the smaller projects that, that I do a lot of. You know, we do a couple hundred roofs a year, I'd probably do 50 and maybe do 100 in Norton. So, most of the towns are a flat rate fee, $50 in Mansfield for a roof, doesn't matter the size of it, residential roof's $50. So, you know, in Norton, you know, if, if it was a custom job upwards of $100,000, you know, you'd be paying thousands of dollars for a roof. That's crazy. So what I did was I printed out, I would say about 15 different towns, and you can see, I actually highlighted, I can even leave this with you, you know, you guys for the night, or, you know, you can just take a copy of it. You know, for example, in, in Berkeley, you know, doors and windows, $45. Demo permit, $45. Roof, $45. Siding, $45. Flat rate fees. You know, it's, it's pretty cheap to do work in, in Berkeley. But as far as additions, you know, I'm not, my gripe isn't with like additions and new homes. $10 per thousand is a little higher, sometimes than $9 per thousand. Sometimes, sometimes do it by the square foot, 35 cents a square foot. So if you're building a thousand-square-foot addition, I found one town that was 35 cents a square foot, so a thousand-square-foot addition would be like $350. I'm building a thousand-square-foot addition in Norton right now, and it was $5,000. So, I just don't understand the difference in, you know, how, how they get away with that. So, but almost every single town around us is a flat rate fee for the smaller projects. Now, I did hear, just through the grapevine, that, you know, obviously, you know, I'm public enemy number one at the town hall, so, which I have no problem being the hill and speaking up about this, because, you know, it's, you know, somebody's got to do it. But, you know, and, and I understand that lowering the fees takes money out of the town budget, and, you know, I'm guessing some town hall have an issue with that, you know. But again, this is affecting the citizens in Norton, it's affecting the elderly, it's, and I deal with these people daily. I do a roof in Norton every day, last one year, almost, and, you know, I see it every day, when I have to add, you know, $300, $500 onto these fees for a permit. And to be honest with you, I got over 200 permits pending at the building department right now that haven't been closed up. The inspectors don't look at the roofs, you know, they, they didn't start closing them out until a few years ago, when the former building inspector asked me to start closing them out. So I put in a request, and I got put in 200 of them, and then it was, you know, the fire alarm at the town hall, because I put in a request for over 200 permits and closed out, but those went back a couple of years. So, they don't even, as far as like the inspectors looking at these projects, I don't, I've never seen a building inspector on a roof. They never look at the roofs, so I don't understand why the significant fees. You know, I think it's, to be honest with you, I think it's disgusting. I can see doing, you know, an addition, doing a new home, I'm going to see that building inspector four or five times, you know, so, $10 per thousand, they're working for their money, they're coming out. Some of these projects, they don't even show up, it's just a fee. So, let's see, that's a good idea.
Lucas, would you mind if we pause for some questions?
Sure.
Give the board a chance to ask any questions?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I shouldn't want to miss nothing, I had a few notes here.
Yeah. And we appreciate you coming in.
Sure.
So, question I had for, for Mike, did we get a chance, did you get a chance to talk to Nick at all about this, and did he have any kind of comments on you?
I did, unfortunately, he's away this week.
Yep.
But he did provide me with some area towns, and, you know, as was said, Norton is $10 per thousand. Bridgewater is a flat fee of 75. West Bridgewater is $14 per thousand, so $4 more than Norton. Middleboro's $10 per thousand. Canton's $11 per thousand. Not that of ours is a flat fee. Plainville's $12 per thousand, so $2 per thousand more than Norton. Rainham's $15 per thousand, so $5 more than Norton. And Sharon is $11 per thousand.
So, so.
I'd like to respond to that.
Yeah, just give me one second, okay? Because I just want to get the, get this, I do want to let you ask the question. But, so, what do the fees, what are the fees intended to cover?
The fees would cover processing of the permit and checking on the builders that apply and make sure they're licensed and they have the insurances, and then just whatever inspections they have.
All right. Just for clarification, are the inspectors that we have, are they salary employees? Are they, we pay them for each one, each thing they have to go see?
The building commissioner is a salary employee, and we have the local you just hired as a salar, salary, pay by the hour.
Pay by the hour.
And then we do have some inspectors for wiring and plumbing that are paid by the inspector.
Okay.
So if I could just respond to, you know, Mr. Unitson.
Yep.
Could you just recap that again? So Bridgewater was how much per thousand?
$75 flat fee.
For a roof? And they're also $12 per thousand for an addition?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just doing roofing, credit fee.
Okay, so Mansfield?
I don't have Mansfield.
So Mansfield is, is $50 per permit. So, I think I, I thought I, you know, clarified that. My issue isn't the building permits for new construction or additions. It's little projects, like the roofing, the siding, the windows. Those are the projects that the people are getting really hammered on. So, when you go through that list, a lot of those towns you mentioned, that's the building permit rate for new construction or remodeling. That's not the permit rate for a lot of smaller projects, and I got the same list here.
I can't say, building commissioner said, so we're giving permit fee in thousands.
So which, if we could go through quickly, a couple of the towns? Because I have them all here.
West Bridgewater, $14 per thousand. Littleboro, $10 per thousand. Canton, $11 per thousand. Not that of ours, a flat fee of 100. Plainville, $12 per thousand. Rainham, $15 per thousand. And Sharon, $11 per thousand.
So some of those are not accurate, but let me just go through this. Foxborough, $75 for a flat rate fee for roof siding, replacement windows. Berkeley, they charge 35 cents a square foot for an addition, 50 cents a square foot for new construction. They charge $45 for flat rate fee, roofing, siding, windows, doors, fence, fireplace, we can go on forever, they get their fees. You're looking at Mansfield, $50 flat rate fee, roofing, siding, windows, insulation, fences, retaining walls. They also charge 55 cents a square foot for their additions, so that's, that's actually kind of high.
Lucas, is there, in your mind, is there an advantage to, because I feel like we're getting buried in numbers.
So.
Is there, is there an advantage to, you know, having Nick? Because I know you said you wanted to speak to Nick. I think that's a great idea so that you guys, so that we know that we're looking at the right information, because like I'm already like, I've already heard a million numbers.
No, I understand. So I'm more than willing to talk to Nick. So what, what I'm saying is, I have these printed out, it's public knowledge to everybody who wants to just go home and Google permit fees in every town, I did this in 10 minutes tonight. So my, like I said, my gripe isn't with the building and the additions, it's with the smaller projects. Because the smaller projects were significantly higher. Like if you guys left it at $10 per thousand for additions, nobody's going to complain, you know, none of the builders are going to complain. The $18 for commercial is high, that's Cambridge, Brookline, I mean, I can go to Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, it's cheaper to do work in the vineyard in Nantucket than it is in Norton. That's how crazy it is. You know, you've got to go into Brookline and Cambridge to find higher fees. And, you know, I deal with this all day long, I have full permits all over the state. You know, I was just shocked at how high the fees are in Norton. You know, the $10 per thousand is fair. The $18 per thousand for commercial is, is a little high, that should be probably around $15 per thousand, which is similar to the surrounding towns. But there should be a flat.
Nick said it is $15 per thousand.
It's $18.
It was $80.
Norton, town of Norton, there's a $100 base fee, $18 per thousand, I typed it up tonight, I printed it up tonight.
Yeah, and this is kind of what, this is kind of why I want to make sure that, that we're all on the same page, because I, I got the sense a little bit too that, let me see how I can say this, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but I'm just going to say it. It seemed like when these fees were changed in 2018, at the time, the justification for the change was we're aligning with, with nearby towns, right?
The justification was Chris Conmichael, you guys know it, I know it, the guy was a cancer for the town, he's the one that increased these fees. And that's, that's, that's it.
And I think what I, what I.
Just don't beat around the bush, yeah.
What I would like to avoid is making any decisions, like doing, making that same mistake where we say, we know what, we're going to try to get it smarter and, and, and maybe it's less, and that would be good for the town and good for contractors and good for everybody. But I want to make sure that we have, I want to make sure that, you know, since, you know, obviously this is something important to you, that you and, and Nick have had a chance to, all right, what are the fees, let's get it together, let's get a spreadsheet together with the fees for all the surrounding towns, and then we can make an intelligent decision around what we want to do for Norton and for everybody else. Because I just don't want to get to where we were where it seemed, again, it seems to me like we were a few years ago, where it's like, let's just make it like the surrounding towns and maybe we didn't study it as closely as we needed to before we did that. So that's just, that's just kind of where I am.
So I, I'm more than willing to talk to Nick and, you know, I go along with Nick, he's a great inspector, I've got no gripe with Nick.
I kind of feel bad like putting the work on you though, you know, I mean like.
I love it, never mind. And, you know, if it helps the people in town, then it's not that big a deal, you know, 20 minutes. But, so the thing is though, you know, I think that, you know, some of the fees could be adjusted a little bit and then some of them need a drastic change. You know, like if I, if I go and do a $30,000 residential roof, which is not uncommon, I shouldn't have to pay $500 for a permit fee when I can go to Mansfield, that same roof and pay 50 bucks, or Eastern that pays $75. It's not fair to the, my customer. It doesn't bother me, it does bother me, you know, that I have to add that, but it doesn't hurt my pocketbook, it hurts theirs. So it's not fair to the people in town.
It does sound like we're somewhat in the, maybe in the higher end, but like we're not the highest, like some of the rates that you read off, we're in the middle of the road.
Certain things, yes.
And even the roofing stuff, right?
Roofing is astronomically higher everywhere. You've got to go right here if you're looking at my.
The Redwood is 180, Franklin is 180.
No, 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 no.
This is your paper.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to find that.
Tom, Steve, while we're doing.
Yeah, no, my, my suggestion was going to be Lucas to sit down with the building inspector and maybe come up with a more, I don't want to say detailed because it looks like you did a lot of work here too, but, but more of a list of what the actual fees are versus what you think, you know, maybe they should become, come together or something. Your recommendation.
I agree, so.
I'm happy to sit in with you guys and assist.
I think it would be helpful to understand too, is it, are the inspectors that are doing these inspections, staff paid or are they by hour paid? Because that makes a difference, I think, in how you're comparing apples to apples.
These, the permit fees for the small ones, they're, I don't, I don't believe they're paid by inspections just a flat fee, usually.
What I'm saying is, is the inspector that's, that's reviewing paperwork and going out there to inspect, are they someone who's a staff person who's been already a salary for the year or we pay them by the hour to go out there? Because that makes a difference to the budget, right?
Yeah, well, no, I think Mike had said that the ones that are paid by the, by the inspection are the ones that are for like electrical and plumbing.
Correct. For us, that's what I'm saying, like looking at these, let's compare apples to apples and know, is it a salary person or is it an hourly person that's doing?
But to be honest with you, with all due respect, in every single town, surrounding town, Mansfield, Foxborough, Roundham, Eastern, you know, all these surrounding towns, they all have inspectors that are getting paid by the town and, you know, the same, why do, why do we have to pay five times more, 10 times more for a residential permit? So, you know, and like, like I said again, for, you know, my gripe is not with some of the fees, I think some of them are actually fair. And I mean, I'm not in the sewer business and the water business, but that whole department needs to be revamped. I mean, the whole town needs to take a serious look at that. You know, I mean, it deters builders, it deters us from building homes in town when we've got to pay $20,000 to tie in the town sewer, that's shit, but $30,000, it deters us, so we just don't do business in town. But that's a whole nother animal. But, you know, I pull a lot of permits for roofs and I've never seen an inspector one time in the last 25 years go inspect a roof. It's, they just take the, you know, that is just a waste, to be honest with you.
All right, so if it's okay with you, let's move ahead and, and I know Steve said he'd be happy to sit in with you guys, if you want to have someone, someone there, but let's, before we, before we make another change, I just want to make sure we have all the information we have to make a, the right decision.
And I'll do a better spreadsheet, you know, I'll take a little time and I'll put something better together where, you know, my opinion on where the fees, on the, on the higher fees, you know, and some of the stuff is not worked, some of it is.
We appreciate it, Lucas.
Thank you.
Alex is really good at Excel. So. All right, thank you.
Did you say what's Excel?
Putting the formulas.
Filter, that's all I can say.
I can do it, I just.
It's amazing, it looks really good.
We should have to, Lucas and Mike coordinate. Okay. All right. I lost my name. All right, next up is town manager's performance review. So I'm going to pass this out to everyone, including the town manager.
Thank you.
Yep, you're, well, don't thank me yet. All right, there's a copy. Just a reminder, you know, this is, this is the board's review of, of Michael, it has to be done in open session, so that's why we're having the conversation at this meeting. And what I want to do is, this is not going to be for the most exciting television, I apologize, but I would like to give everybody a chance to read through this. Just before you do so, this page here is the summary of all the scores for the individual sections, and I summarized all of that. And then this, this packet here has the, has the advice from town council on it, on conducting this session, but then also, if you flip through, it has the town manager's comments that he provided on his own performance, and then he has, and then, sorry, we have, what I did was took everybody's comments and consolidated them into the section that says select board comments. Make sense? So if everybody wants to go ahead and read through, read through this, we'll give everybody 10 minutes or so. I used to do this thing where like people would stand up when they were done or whatever, but just make eye contact with me when we're done. And then what we'll do is we'll have a conversation afterwards, and then Mike's contract has a provision in it to vote for a, an increase, a percentage increase based on this evaluation. Sound good, Mike?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Can I just ask one thing on the overall scoring summary?
Yeah.
Why is there only four, four numbers on that?
I didn't vote, I'll have to move.
So, yeah, so probably, probably worth mentioning, so, yeah. Thanks, Matt.
Because I did the same thing when I first started, all right, so.
Yeah, so Denise, so this is for the time period of March.
Right, so you were in even?
'22 through March of '23. So Denise wasn't on the board for that time.
We're going to have to move on to the next. With the intermission portion of the meeting.
Was I not supposed to sign that? Where's the, where's the signature? This is the source gene.
Yeah, you can sign it in the future, we said what we'd do is just have you guys authorize me to sign the contract rather than hold it.
Okay, so it needs all of our signatures.
And it gets that action working to go into digital signatures.
And then we have the backend. Those also have to be signed by all of us.
All right, we'll wait for my comment.
Alex, when you came here tonight, did you come down Main Street?
Main Street. They already had it, detour.
Yeah, I came up, I came up on the plane as well, yeah.
There's a detour sign in my yard, I didn't give permission.
Even I, and that's the detours during my radio show on WARA.
There's a 20, 20 foot from the satellite. I just kind of.
It's overnight tonight, right?
Yeah, it's 6:00. You what? Say they come somewhere.
All right, well, is that?
Absolutely.
All right, so, so I think at this point, let's just open it up to, to any comments, but, but first I think maybe we give Mike an opportunity to give his comments, does that sound good to everybody? All right, Mike, comments?
Thank you. It's always good to get feedback and getting a little earlier this, this next round, but thanks very much, I appreciate the comments and review them and trying to address anything that.
All right, sounds good. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I think, I just, my only comment is, again, going through this process twice, just being, I can't imagine having your sort of team change on a whim like this and not sort of by choice, it's not. So I think it's coming up with some sort of, we keep sort of going back and hashing over this, but that sort of onboarding process, like I really feel like there is nothing worse than coming in and not knowing what the hell is going on. And so for a new person coming in, it'd be just really awesome if there was a template of, okay, because it does, it changes a lot, and so, you know, I'm still like, I'm still finding out things that I didn't know about, and again, I'm not saying directly at you, but in sort of you sort of spearheading the effort, it would just be really helpful. Because it is, it's not fun, you know, we're coming in as volunteers and, you know, we're all working full time too, and it's just, it's really hard, like just to kind of get up to speed quickly. So that's all, but I think, you know.
I think, I think coming up with an outline for that and then maybe on a light meeting discussing with all of us, because I'm sure there are things.
A light meeting.
I know.
Tell me when.
I know. But I know, because I'm thinking that, because he deals with so much else, he might forget certain small things that, that we might say, hey, nobody told me about this until I found out about it, so I think we should coordinate or at least put, have some input on it.
So what would be helpful, so now that you've been on for a while, look at the booklet that we have for onboarding and say, say, you know, it's missing this or it should have that, that would be helpful.
Where is that booklet?
It's in the select board office.
Okay.
So, yeah, so to that, to the next point, even that, you didn't know that there was a binder, right?
If someone told me I forgot, I apologize.
I'm 100% up with you, I'm just saying that I think somebody had told me there was a binder and that's why I got mine.
Yeah.
But somebody told me that, so I think little things like that.
But there should be an actual something, a binder given to a new select board member, in my opinion.
But there is, there is.
Right, but take home and.
And the binder I got had like the charter in it and it had sort of that kind of stuff, which is helpful.
So I never got a binder, and I, I was elected twice, never got a binder, never, I mean, granted, I was elected during COVID and so it was a nightmare, but I'm just saying, I never got anything. I actually got called saying, you know, you need to do this ethics thing, I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about.
What I would love to see is something that's, something that's more, what I would love to see is like something that has, you know, resources in it. So like instead of, instead of, you know, it could be, it could be electronic, doesn't have to be a physical binder, and it could just be electronic, you know, here's the, here's the MMA website, and here's some information you can get, here's the MSA website, here's some information you can get, you know, links to, it could just be a list of links to like where you can go to get information and links to the charter and links to the buylaws.
Well, to that, and to that point, maybe even a little further where a schedule would get set up in the beginning saying, okay, your, you know, first month, we're going to introduce you to hear all the different, you know, committee members who want to introduce you to, and to your point, here's the meeting schedule for the MMA or whatever, and like, again, just context, like, because there's just too much information for one person to.
So my first election was for a planning board, what feels like 100 years ago, and the first meeting we had was, was just an orientation type meeting. So maybe, I mean, I know there's sometimes, you know, one person turnover, but that, even if it's an hour long meeting, could be helpful. So maybe, I mean, I know there's sometimes, you know, one person turnover, but that, even if it's an hour long meeting, could be helpful.
Sure.
I don't know, we'd have to talk about it if it's open to you.
Or even if just it was an agenda item in that first meeting, right?
Like a long meeting.
Longboarding, right, we just have kind of like a free-flowing discussion, I think that's a great idea.
I would even suggest that the electronic version would be the better version, because you can search for key terms and find things I've been looking for pretty quickly, versus scanning through a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, in my day job, like, one of the things I've done is sort of create that like, you know, here's what you, here's just links, here's links to a million different things, and, you know, because I don't, you know, I think Mike should sit down with someone, obviously, and go through some of those things, but he can't go through everything. And so just to give everybody the resources to find what they need to get themselves up to speed, I think would be great.
There was something that I got, and I know an email they had, you know, so you're, so now you're a newly-elected official, these are, I know there was an email to it.
Yeah.
Any questions I had, I just reached out and.
I think.
Jen, Michelle.
I've got the ethics thing.
The MMA does like a new select board orientation that I went to, which was, which was great. But, you know, it's on a Saturday, and, you know, if you can't go, it's only one time a year that they do it, so. So there are, you know, there are resources out there, but if we could put together something, like I said, like even just electronically, something that we could just give to the board members and say, hey, here's, here's some resources. And then I love that idea of having like a, a quick orientation with the board itself.
Yeah, I thought that was fantastic.
So that's a great idea, yeah.
Well, I think to the long weekend coming up, Denise can take the binder home this weekend.
Yes, is this the blue binder, is this the blue binder?
I got a white one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, great, thanks, thanks, Mike. I think, and just on the, and on that topic, I think one of the other things we could do as a board is to, I don't know if you guys remember, this, this is a template that I used at the last, for Mike's last review, so I continue to use the template, figured it was probably good to try to get some consistency going forward. There was a list of tasks in here, do you remember that, there was a list? And I just felt like probably a good idea for us to come up with expectations for what we expect from Mike.
I love that.
So that, you know, so that it's clear upfront, you know, what do we expect from, well, not just Mike, any, any town manager, right? What do we expect from the position of town manager? And, and sit down and go through, you know, and that could lead to certain specific things, certain specific tasks. Just in here, I felt like it was kind of muddling things, it was like we were looking back to do a review, but in the same document, looking forward to these tasks. And nobody's going to meet all, do all of those tasks, there were seventy-five tasks or whatever in it, right? So, but for us to set the expectations, I think, is something we should, we should continue to talk about as a board, and, and maybe put together, you know, some things that, you know, what do we expect from the town manager going forward? And then, then you can, then it's easier to do the review and hold them accountable, hold people accountable, because you've set the expectation right up.
Yeah, yeah, because this is just the, the bylaw language, which is intentionally vague, right? But that's so, it can be over-compassing over many, many years, but your goals, objectives might shift, right? I think we should kind of hone in on what are the important things that we should be focusing on when we're coming here, yeah.
Alright, does anybody have any comments, Alex, I felt like you were, no, good. Okay, so next up then is, Mike has a provision in his contract, this cover page that says section three, it's actually section four of his contract, which allows for an additional pay incre, is it an increase or a bonus? It's an increase, right? An additional pay increase based on his performance review. So if you look at the, at the scoring summary, there's no, there's no sort of science to this, like, we, we just need to discuss what we think is a fair increase for Mike based on his performance. The, the performance increase bonus is between three and six percent, that's the range. So, uh, I'm happy to start the discussion if anybody has any, any, any comments on that. You know, I, I would, I would say, you know, if, if the average wait for his, for his review was three point eight five, then we could round that to four percent and give him a four percent pay increase, based on his contract, which is in his contract. If you feel like, you know, we don't have to give him, we don't have to give, it could be, it could be zero. But if we do give something, it should be between two and six percent.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that was the whole, the whole premise of having the scoring summary is, is to give us that gauge, and it's already been weighted. So, you know, I'm totally comfortable with, with basing it on what the review says, so.
Steve?
I'm comfortable as well, I know what you say to the town doing the budgetary components of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, between three and six percent, you know, basically a four out of five, that's what he got, so I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with a four to five percent increase.
Okay, alright, so, Mike, any comments before we vote on our recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
You're not going to ask for seven? Seven was nine.
Alright, so, I will make, as a chair, I will make a motion to approve a four percent merit, I think it's called merit increase, for Mike based on our review this evening, and also on the performance evaluation scoring that we have in place.
Second.
Okay.
Abstain.
Okay, so, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One, me.
Okay, so Denise abstained, the rest of the board voted for your, for your review.
Thank you.
Alright?
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, next up is, I don't know. So next up is a discussion on the council of agents' additional requests for the new senior and community center.
So Steve and I met with a couple of members of the council, for instance, the senior center, a function of the council on aging today. And I think, I told them I would go to the next building community meeting just to clarify things, because I think a lot of the things they thought were taken out of the project were actually added back into the project. And some of the stuff is things that we can add later. Some like an awning over the patio, right now the building's under construction, and in order to make a structural change to the building would just be something that we just can't afford to do right now. But as I said to them afterwards, we can add a sunset or awning if it's needed over the patio. They're talking about a bocce court, that's something that I'm sure with the people, the generous contractors and landscapers we have in town.
Volunteers would do it, too.
We would get a bocce court built in. But as far as the items inside the building, furniture, kitchen utensils and things like that, they, I'm told they're added back into the patio back. The bricks that they're planning on having, people donate money and have their bricks and grid, that's back in the project too. So I told them I'd go to the next meeting and firm all that. We'll keep the line of communications open.
Yeah, the next meeting is the thirtieth.
And I think one of the discussion points is, to be honest with you, so we know we're getting that donation, and we have it on the agenda tonight to name the building. And when we were going through this process, planning and town meeting, we were talking about a million dollar donation. And the last bank statement was one point six, and hopefully they're still investing more. But, so, I know the intent was that you have a million dollars that would go towards that building and it would help reduce the total cost. Now it's a little higher, and maybe all of it doesn't have to go to reduce that cost, but there's something that really is needed. Now that you have this money that's going towards the building, then the money that was approved by the town now have some, I'm not saying go crazy, but something that's really necessary, you might be able to do a little bit. But that, that's for the building committee to decide.
Okay.
And they walk by the community center, they are working hard on the community center, and it's going to look good.
Alright, guys have any questions for Mike on that?
No.
Or Steve? Okay, alright, and next up is the vote to approve the utility easement agreement.
So what this is, where the bike path is going on North Washington, there's a section that's owned by a man named Peterson. And he owns land on both sides of the path, most of it being on behind the path and back on the street. And he just wanted to make sure that M F N gave him permission to go across their sewer line if he kind of developed his property at any point, that we give him permission to go across the bike lane. We did tell him we're not approving anything, and when we go to the planning board, you're obviously going to have to have that cross approved, and whatever safety measures they want put in place is up to them. But, so this is an agreement that was worked out, and as part of this, he agrees to hold us harmless for any future, can't come back looking for more money or anything from this, so I, I, this is a great compromise, I know M F N has signed it, he has signed it. And I told him I'd bring it to you tonight, see if you'd authorize me to sign that.
So M F N has expressed that.
Yes.
Correct. Right, any questions, comments, concerns?
Alright, so I'll motion to approve the access to the utility easement agreement, or motion, yeah, right?
Yeah.
And authorize.
And authorize the town manager to sign, whenever you have second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, Mike?
Thank you.
Well said. Up next is our standing agenda item, the update on the H C As.
Yeah, it's, I said last week, things are moving along pretty good, I think. We have two items, the attorney has addressed one, and we're waiting for her, but she said, actually responded today, since she's still working on the other, other item. So hopefully by next week, we have an answer to that, and I'll, I'll get that over to you as soon as I get it, and we can move forward.
Okay, alright, so not much, not much big going on there, it's only been a week, so, any questions or anything for Mike on that one? Alright, so discussion or vote on the naming of the senior community support center?
In your packet, you have a letter from a law firm, oops, executor of a will, and also an email from Beth Rossi. So I'd like to have the select board approve the name of the building as the Nelson Senior Community Center.
It's after the articles.
Yeah. Can you talk a little bit about the Nelsens?
So the Nelsens have lived in Norton, and actually had a, a store in Norton, and then a pool business, installed pools. And also the three-hole golf course on one twenty-three, opened that years ago.
The one that's now the first T?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And.
The raining river.
And they moved to Florida when they retired, and then were living in Georgia, and that's, the attorney from Georgia called me one day and said, they apparently liked Norton, and want to leave their estate to Norton, and you have a building.
Did they have eight children?
I don't know, I don't think so. I don't think so. And said, you know, that they'd like to have, make the donation and have a building named after them, and he said, do you have any projects going on? I said, well, as a matter of fact, I don't know. I guess, or, well, senior center.
Good timing, good timing.
That's great. Alright, and so what was the name again, Mike, I'm sorry?
Nelson.
Nelson.
Nelson. The Nelson Senior Community Center.
It's a great opportunity for us to get other people to start thinking about it.
So I will move to, I guess, to name the senior community center, the Nelson Senior Community Center, second.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yeah.
I know that there's been a lot of debate in the public about, is it a senior center, is it a community center, who's it for, whose it benefit? So I just want to kind of open up that discussion, do we want to call it a community center or a senior community center? Because a senior community center seems, seems to apply to some, to some I'm looking at that's just for seniors.
So it's open to, we're going to have the senior center, we're going to, in the senior center will also be assistance for home heating oil and housing assistance, and then, you know, recreation has some program they want to run there. So it will be open for the community.
Oh, there's a member of the public, I'm sorry.
Come on, come on up and introduce yourself.
Okay.
Yeah. Just give us your name and.
Yeah.
Kim Arena, eight Fordham Drive, to your point. As a member of the public, and a lot of talk has been going on about, is it a senior center, is it a community center? And by naming it a senior community center, even though there may be things that you're privileged to, that everyone here is privileged to, as a member of the community, you know, I think it will feel more welcoming as a community center, and attaching the senior name seems to narrow it down.
Right.
And that's perception.
Thank you.
So that was my suggestion to you.
So what do we do?
I did reach out.
So would the Nelson family be okay with the Nelson Community Center, or they don't?
Senior and the community center?
No, but you're saying, when you say senior, you're, you kind of lose the community. And I think the reality is, it's mostly a senior center.
And there are a lot of seniors, you know, services that are being offered, and I'm all, that's all great. But I think the community at large could use and wants and voted for something that included a community center.
I was just going to say, so my, if you look at my email, my email, I was just reaching out to Beth Rossi, I said, are you, are you good with the Nelson Community Center? And then she came back, the Nelson Senior Community Center, so, I mean, if you want to hold off for a meeting and have someone, a health fund agent come in and talk to you.
I was just thinking Norton Senior and Community Center.
Nelson.
No, that's what I said. No, sorry, Nelson. I didn't mean that, I didn't mean that, I take that back, I was thinking, yeah, Nelson Senior and Community Center.
That's, that's kind of a happy medium, because the Nelson family wanted the Nelson Senior Center, or they suggested.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll amend my motion to say the Nelson Senior and Community Center, if that.
Do we want to go back to Beth first and see if she'll be cool with that, and then bring it back and we'll vote on it?
This is what Beth wanted here, the Nelson Senior Community Center. So if I put the and in there.
I just want to put the and in there, I think it feels like it includes everything.
But I think to the point, you know, maybe that it is more of a, just a little bit more discussion, it was a big, it's a big investment.
Yeah, we don't have to do.
When it's on the building, it's on the building.
Right. Well, we've taken names off then, but, yes.
We're not, we're certainly saying, you know, we're certainly appreciative of, of what they're doing, we just want to make sure we get.
So I'll, I'll withdraw the motion that we, it's not urgent, so.
Future agenda.
Yeah, and just see if we can find that, just put that word and in there, I think that would, that might do.
But get a little more feedback from.
Yeah, and we can talk about it a little bit more.
Let's head up to the meeting.
No, 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 okay.
I mean.
My wife will kill me, no, no.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike, you were.
No, I was just going to, I'm not going to say that.
Okay, okay, alright, very good. Alright, next up is, we have the, oh, any other business, not reasonably anticipated? I don't have anything there either, old business, the Fall Annual Town Meeting Article List.
Alright. So we're going to vote on some of the articles. So under article one, unpaid bills, we don't have any unpaid bills, and the finance committee have recommended no action, so.
Okay. Do no action on that as well?
Yeah.
Alright, this is where I need my, I need the board members to.
Vote to take no action.
Vote to take no action.
I'll move to take no action on article number one.
I'll second.
Second. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Article 2 is separation expense, and the Finance Committee voted to recommend $117,544 for free cash to fund separation expenses, and that was 11-0.
I will motion to endorse Article 2 as written.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Article 5 is the Water Operating Budget Amendment, and the Finance Committee voted to recommend 11-0. So the amendment to the budget is $31,536 from water receipts for a total budget of $4,782, $4,782,894. And just to tell you where that money goes.
So what does that mean, Michael, there? Adding $31,000 to the budget?
Eight thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars in salaries and $22,973 in the debt services. And Finance Committee asked why we had to add the debt services. So a couple of the projects they have are taking so long, we have never rolled over a note after three years, but we gotta roll it over again, and they make you pay down a portion of it. So that's why we have to pay the $22,973, because of the delay in that.
And why the extra, like, $8,000 salaries? Did we not anticipate that? Or were just?
They had a, I don't know, it was because of the contract? No, it was, it was just something they didn't budget correctly after the contracts were settled, we asked them how they had actually won or sold.
All motion to endorse Article 5 as written. Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And Article 6 is for the Sewer Department, the Sewer Budget, and this would add $16,484 for a total budget of $2369,477. And this would come from retained earnings. And this is $16,483 in Personnel Services, because of a retirement that came up in the department that they didn't know about, and $1 in Debt Services.
So someone retired, and we had to hire someone to subcontract stuff out? What does that mean?
The $16,483 is payout for retirement.
Got you, the buyback or whatever?
Seriously, $1?
$1.
All right.
I'll motion to endorse Article 6 as written. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right.
All right. So Article 11, I asked that you reconsider Article 11 and vote again. So Article 11, when we voted, it was $85,000 coming out of free cash. This is the cannabis mitigation money, and it's $35,000. I don't know why I picked up on that when I saw it, it's $35 in the agreement.
Yeah, I remember seeing that, but I don't know why I didn't say anything about it. So I will motion to, I guess, to reendorse Article 11 as.
Reconsider.
Reconsider. Oh, and then we have to vote again? Okay, so I'll motion to reconsider Article 11.
Second. Okay, all, all those in favor of reconsidering the endorsement of Article 11?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I'll motion to endorse Article 11 as corrected.
Taken. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next article FinCon voted on was OPEB, to use $120,000 from free cash to fund a OPEB, and that passed 11-0.
I just, sorry, I have a quick question. OPEB is the retirement fund?
It's other post-employment benefits. It's rarely health insurance costs for retired employees.
So are we putting additional monies into that, planning for the additional stuff that we have recently contracted?
So OPEB is a fund that is required by the actuaries, probably about back in 2010 when it really started, and they wanna see that you're putting some money away to fund your retiree health insurance in the future. I mean, our liability is over like $61 million. And it really, that's something I always say, that's something I could see if you were a company and they're afraid you're gonna go bankrupt and close down, and you're not gonna meet your obligation in the future. It's really not gonna happen to us. But it's just something that we have to do. You know, we have actuaries come in and do a study every two years to see what our liability is. And in our financial policy manual, what we're doing is adding, increasing it by $5,000 a year, with our goal is to get to $200,000 a year. And with the hope that, right now Bristol County still says they're on target to pay off, fully fund the retirement system by 2034. And if they hit that mark, that over $2 million a year that we pay into the retirement system, we won't have to pay that much in anymore. And that extra money would go to help fund our OPEB liability.
Because then hopefully we're tracking too, like, we know the ages of people that work here, and you can estimate, like, if there's gonna be a bull's of people retiring at the same time, we kind of have a heads up and know that, right? Plan for it.
Yeah, well, we fully fund it every year, and, you know, the actuaries, when they do their study, they'll.
Highlight that thing.
So I'll motion to endorse Article, it's 18 now, right?
It is, yeah.
Article 18, that's written. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
This is what everybody's been waiting for here.
The last article that the FinCon voted on was the petition to adopt a town motto, and they voted 8-3 with the feeling that this should go to town meeting, let the townspeople decide.
Did this already go to town meeting once?
It's dead and failed.
Last year.
Is this, is this a different motto?
No, I'm sure it's the same.
At first, you don't succeed.
I thought you had to wait, I thought you had to wait a certain period of time in between revisiting the same thing.
No, just for zoning out and so.
So for petition, you can bring it up?
Can bring it up. Okay.
I say let the town vote again. I'll motion to endorse Article 22 as written.
Second. I'll just add a comment that I'm gonna vote yes, but to let town meeting decide, I'm not necessarily supporting the actual town motto that's been proposed, so.
I'd agree, yeah.
Agreed.
So, but we'll let, we'll let town meeting decide.
Something we'll propose, what is it?
Oh.
Oh, the actual motto?
It's Acumen Actum. It's Latin for sharp point or intellect.
It's what it was.
Dan Pearson, it's Dan Pearson's article.
It didn't even say that. He knew that.
I just knew, yeah, I just knew off the top of my head.
It says.
You wrote it down.
You just don't even know what you're voting on.
I remember hearing it, I just don't know what the words were. I knew it was like Latin or something, yeah.
I agree with Kevin, you know, I'm not sure I'm for it, but I also want to let the town. Exactly, yes.
So, Steve, so hearing the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Next up on Old Business is the vote to approve the, I guess I'll have to read the whole thing, United Steel, Paper, and Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union, Local Union 9517, Unit 15, formerly known as CNA A contract.
So I brought the changes, as you suggested last time, and the union agreed and signed off on the M.O.A.
All right.
Okay, so I will motion to approve the United Steel, Paper, Forestry Rubber Manufacturing Energy Allied Industrial and Service Workers International Union, the FLCIO, CLC, Local Union 9517, Unit 15, CNA A contract.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Take the next one.
All right.
We need to delegate.
This one's easy. No, I vote to approve the Norton Police Superior Offices Association, the NPSOA contract.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
All right. No, I'll vote, I'll vote, sorry. Let's do that again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Aye. No, whatever.
Aye, two doesn't matter. All right, moving on to, do we have anything, Denise, on the Select Board Code of Conduct? Are you still?
Oh, I didn't bring my laptop. I did, I did collate it.
Okay.
And sent it to you and Mike with all of the comments in one document.
Okay.
What time is that? It didn't take a while, but we're.
No, no, yeah, do you wanna, I mean, do you wanna put it, we can put it off to the.
Let's do the next meeting, because every quarter of nine.
Okay, yeah.
Because there's a lot of comments in there.
Yeah, it's a lot. We wanna get, in the theme tonight, we wanna, we wanna get it right, so when we have some time to get it right.
And I'll bring my laptop next time, so I can change it as we're.
Awesome.
Talking.
Perfect. I do not have an update on the Select Board's report and photo. Do you have an update on that?
No, I don't.
Here's your week for me. All right, so I will reach out, I do wanna reach out to Mike, and was it Charlene? Who should I reach out to? Michelle. I'll reach out to Michelle and we'll go on that. All right, and then Mike has an update for us on the extended stay, house situation.
So we had a good meeting with our representatives for this site, and I did, they did give us a list today that I'll get over to you for sizes, for clothing, for people in the facility. And I know that Beth Rossi has like five car seats. I know I have two, and I gotta bring in. So, you know, people have come forward with some donations. But I think it's important to get to that last, so you can, if you have anything that's interested in helping out. And we did have a conversation with them about winters coming quickly, and they need, they'll need help with winter clothes. And also Beth talked about how we could take them to St. Vincent de Paul to see if they can help them with some of that. We also, I mentioned, you know, we've got a couple of things coming up, the Halloween parade, and the lighting on the Comic Con, and if there's a way to get the kids over here, we've worked with them. And we also provided them some information, or Beth told them about, they didn't realize the dial-a-ride with that program. So we talked about how hooters are so expensable, that that's two bucks a ride.
Yep, the Gator, the Gator Go United.
Yep, so the Gator dial-a-ride is a great opportunity for them. And I wanna talk to Gator, because I guess there's a flag down service, I know Peter will know about this, but there's a flag down service for the bus, and it goes in through the, talking industrial park, but it doesn't come over to where the extended stay is. So we've always been trying to get a bus to go to our industrial park, so if it does go through the top industrial park, it could just loop around. When the extended stay, or go by the extended stay, go into our industrial park and turn around and go back.
That's a Gator 6 bus.
Gator 6, all right, thank you, Peter. I'll make sure I mention that.
Do we need to point to them for that? After board?
Where are we? Did we just?
Mike was on it.
All right, we'll put that on the next. All right, we'll put that on the next agenda.
I don't think they do that often, they meet, but it's during the day, but I don't think it's that often. I think, I thought it was quarterly, yes, I'm right?
All right.
I expected that list, I didn't know those people already asked about it. And who does that all go to, when they, the all donations?
Quoting with Beth Rossi.
Okay.
And the community center, I mean, the senior.
Senior and community, and senior, senior's first billing.
Beth has done a lot of, a lot of work on that, so we appreciate that very much.
I mean, the ideas that she was giving, oh, by the way, we were the first unattended center in the state. They made that clear.
What do you mean?
What's that? What does that mean?
So they brought all the, they took over those rooms at the extended stay with no supervision there. We were the first unattended site in the state, of course we were. They said we were.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, an interesting point, Cedar Junction is empty right now. There are no persons. I know someone that works there, and he's like, we're putting all these migrants and refugees into all these places. You've got a state-owned facility that has resources, you know, it has cafeteria, it has bedding, you know, rooms and all that, you don't have to close the gates. But that's something we've gotta all talk to our state reps about, yes.
That's a good idea, Ken, because I'm seeing all the negative stuff spread on Facebook about the migrants. People that have compassion, people that have sympathy to those migrants, because they came to America to find the dream.
All right, Select Board's report in mail, anyone?
I had something I can't find where I have it, so I'll do it next week, I'm sorry.
Anybody have anything? I don't have anything. Nope? All right. Next meeting agenda, we do have a public hearing for Fleet First Incorporated for Class 2 used car dealer's license to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles at 92A East Main Street. Just wanna make that announcement. We are not adjourning to executive session. And Steve?
I approve it, it'll be more than separated.
All right.
If I could just remind you one thing, James, when you're doing the planning for your meetings, November 9th may not be a meeting night, because the town hall closes at 11:00.
Isn't that, we just said it was a meeting?
I'll be for it.
Okay.
I'll fix it, I don't know.
Oh, you mean, doing office hours?
Yeah.
I didn't know whether you had a meeting.
The 9th, you said the 9th.
I think it was on the list.
Okay. The volunteer for the committee.
So, Kim, are you going to extend that? So, Kim?
I said not November 15.
By the 8th.
We can't have a meeting on the 9th, they said.
So, yeah, if we get them in, we can extend it.
Okay.
Can I just, is the 12th good at 6 o'clock for the Zoom for, just to approve?
I think, I think it's great, because one of my announcements was to remind people that I'm having office hours in the town hall between 5 and 7 on the 12th.
Okay. So I'll be, we'll only take like five minutes.
I'll be in your office.
So what day is it?
It's the 3rd, next Thursday, next Thursday.
I'm pretty traveling, but I can, I can.
It's gonna be Zoom.
I'm pretty sure Steve's gonna be barraged with people asking questions.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take five minutes, I'll take a five-minute break.
So will we have, we should have forum then? Denise, you can make it on the 12th.
I can make it, I just.
Because I can't, can't make it anyway, so.
And then you have to get in Friday, our open weekend, signing the notes.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll hold the forums back for those, that time that Steve comes in.
Should we have extra security there to handle the crowds?
Police detail, probably. I'll be there, I'll be there to make sure of it.
There you go, well, there we go.
It's been bouncing.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned.